Good evening and welcome to the regular Board of Aldermen meeting for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic.
To the public.
For which it stands.
Which it stands. One nation.
A nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. And justice.
All right, Trish, can we get a roll call?
Yes. Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Farrar.
Here.
Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Knut.
Here.
Alderman Hardy. Alderman Mello.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Yeah.
Alderman Mamon.
I'm here, Trish.
President Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Duranty. Eleven present, three absent.
Well, I only had two absent, who?
I have Duranty, Hardy, and oh, nope, I have Adamowski, never mind.
Yeah, twelve, too, right?
Twelve, too.
All right, declare quorum.
I'm here, Hardy.
Oh, Hardy, thirteen, two.
Eight.
About thirteen, two, thirteen, one.
One.
Sorry, still have a quorum. Uh, before we start, uh, you guys got a late communication or resignation. I'd like to take that up under resignations later in the agenda.
Make a motion to add it, motion to add as a late agenda item.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by, who was that, Rivers?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That.
Hi.
All right, motion carries unanimously, we'll, we'll take that up later. Uh, we have the minutes of the September ninth meeting, um, for approval, any amendments or just a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, all in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving right along, uh, we'll move to public session and just a reminder, happy to see everybody here, um. Just, you know, just a reminder, uh, anyone from the public can address the board with questions or comments. Uh, one time speaking and because we have so many agenda items, twenty something tonight, um. Please limit yourself to, uh, three minutes or less with your comments, but anyone from the public who wishes to address the board tonight, please make yourself known. Anyone from the public? Yes. A Lynch, oh, go ahead, you're first.
Thank you, uh, good evening, everyone, um, Trish and Lynch, fifteen Birchwood Drive. Um, just a quick little thing I want to talk about that was put on the agenda for this evening. I noticed that the sports advisory panel to Parks and Recreation, I believe, might be voted on this evening. Um, please note that every recreation sport and high school team has a representative on that panel except the girls' high school softball team. The current coach of that team is Linda Williams, so I hope the board ask her to be put on this panel, because like I said, every other recreation sport program and high school team has, um, someone representing them. Thank you.
Thank you. So pointing that out, those were, those were just carried over from the, this summer, that's why the go back.
Yeah, I understand that, Josh, um, and I figured, um, it was still from the summer, but she wasn't listed in the summer as, as well, so, um, I would appreciate if, uh, she could be added, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who wants to address the board?
Just about the rest. Or is it? Can you mute?
Anyone else from the public?
Thomas Egan.
Yes.
Seventy-five Liberty Street here in Ansonia, Connecticut. Um, I sent out late last night and hence why I drafted an executive summary, a proposal for the greater good of the city of Ansonia. And in it, it detailed throughout sixty-four some odd pages, a comprehensive redevelopment plan, North End Economic Redevelopment Plan that Sheila O'Malley put out on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, I appreciate her sending me a copy of that and I hence drafted that proposal. There are four entities that are interested in investing a hundred and fifty million dollars in Ansonia, which will create approximately a little over a thousand jobs, possibly more. And it should bring in between twenty and thirty million dollars in revenue. Those projects include the first steel mill in the United States since nineteen sixty-three, a solar panel manufacturing facility, which will be the second in the United States, the only other place it's manufactured in right now is Ohio, as well as a warehouse, research center. There's some discussion to put in a fire school so that all the fire departments around the lower Noggetuck Valley and state of Connecticut can come train in, a small business hotel and environmental research lab, and what all of these things will do is that they're going to bring back, and this is all at the Ansonia Copper and Brass Properties, what these proposal that I gave to the Board of Aldermen, it's going to create tax revenue and jobs, good paying jobs. When I was looking at this project with employing a thousand people at making eighty thousand dollars each, each person pays twenty thousand dollars in taxes, roughly. That's where the twenty million dollars in revenue starts, in addition to property taxes. The city has gone through some growing pains as most municipalities have gone through all throughout the state of Connecticut, but I think it would be a good thing for this board to take a look at this proposal. I don't think we're going to get much help from Hartford or from wherever else, and that we have to continue looking on our own. The company that is spearheading this project is Buck Scientific out of Water Street here in Ansonia, Connecticut, they're growing at such a fast rate, I can't keep up. The technologies that they're making inside that laboratory are planning going and doing surface analysis on NASA Artemis program as well as the mission to Mars. That's how advanced the manufacturing is going on right now here at Ansonia. So, I ask you all to take a look. It's about a hundred million dollars is coming in between private equity and individual donors, as well as substantial amount of money coming in from the United Nations to help redevelop this area. I think this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. I haven't heard anything else, and I won't name the other projects that might or may not have been proposed. But I think having the first steel mill in sixty-something years I think is something to say, and I think it's a good idea, and I urge this board, I emailed you all. I know late last night, you might not have been able to have a chance to look at it. I urge you all to take a look at it, and thank you to Sheila O'Malley for drafting up the North End Economic Redevelopment Proposal. You have my thanks for that, and I appreciate the Board of Aldermen's time.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that was a extensive proposal, so.
I worked a lot on that, it was a lot of hours.
We'll, we'll dig into it, thank you. All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Egan, can I have your address again, please?
Seventy-five Liberty Street, Ansonia, Connecticut.
That's Ansonia Copper and Brass address.
That's my address tonight.
Oh, okay.
We won't send you any mail.
Twenty Platte Street, if you really got to write it down, Ansonia.
Thank you, uh, next, Amy. You are up.
Good evening, um, Amy Bravo, ten Clifford Drive. Um, I just, uh, was hoping that maybe at some point tonight there would be an update um, to let us know where everything stands with the Nolan Field project. I know the rec board met for the first time last month, um. We didn't really get a full overview of exactly where everything stood with the Nolan Field project. Um, I also noticed there were no minutes posted yet from that rec board meeting, um, to kind of go back and see exactly, um, where we stand with everything, so if that could be addressed tonight, um, including any open, um, projects or things that are still, uh, still need to be completed with Nolan Field, whether that be, um, where we stand, uh, with, with everything, with the extra building for the bathrooms, the Little League slash softball field, um, the possible purchase of a portable fence for the main baseball diamond, if there could just be an update on that, um, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure in the public official session, there'll be some updates on that. Thank you. Uh, other speakers from the public? Anyone else from the public? Last call, public? Seeing none, we'll close the, the public session, we'll move on to the public official session headed off by Mayor Cassetti.
Mister President.
Awful, there's no record.
Aldermen, residents of this great city of Ansonia.
More times.
Twenty-three years ago, our city witnessed one of its darkest days, the murder of Demontis Johnson, a young man, a local football star and an Ansonia Charger, took place right here in Ansonia on Olson Drive. That tragedy was not random. It was the product of a failed social experiment of high-density housing that had turned from affordable homes into isolated blocks of despair. What was once meant to help our people become a symbol of everything that tears a community apart, violence, hopelessness, segregation, we promised ourselves then, never again. And yet here we are, decades later, hearing whispers once again that Ansonia would welcome high-density housing back into our city, that we should put it on the sixty-acre copper and brass site, the very ground that once powered the valley's economy. Ladies and gentlemen, that would not be progress, that would be a betrayal of our promise to Demontis Johnson and to every resident who lived through the consequences of failed housing policy. Let me be crystal clear, Ansonia already carries its share, over fourteen percent deed-restricted affordable housing. We've done our part, more than most. Meanwhile, wealthy communities surrounded us, towns with more open land, more money, more influence, refused to do theirs. They talk about equity while pushing density into cities like ours, while protecting our own, their, their own pristine neighborhoods from it. It's hypocrisy, and Ansonia will not be the scapegoat of other people's moral posturing. The copper and brass property is the heart of Ansonia's future, a sixty-acre canvas on which we can paint our comeback story. Now, after years of remediation and hard work, it can be that again, but only if we make the right choices. If we allow it to become a field of high-density housing, we don't create opportunity, we destroy it. High-density housing doesn't bring prosperity, it brings pressure on our schools, on our police, on our streets, and on every taxpayer in this city. It stretches our city services thin and drives taxes up, not down. You want proof? Look at New Haven, look at Hamden, cities with tax rates over fifty and forty, forty and fifty mils, crushed by the weight of density and dependency. That is not the future Ansonia deserves. We are already one of the most densely populated cities in Connecticut. What we need now is balance, not burden. We need new revenue to support the residents already living in our city and to reinvest into our services from schools to roads. And we need new jobs on that site, new opportunities for generations, young and old. And so tonight, I'm asking this board to stand with me, to stand with the residents who built this city and to lock copper and brass property. Let us place a deed restriction on that land, no high-density housing, not now, not ever, unless the people themselves by referendum decide otherwise. Let this be the people's land, protected by the people's will. This is not just a policy vote, this is a moral stand for the soul of Ansonia. We have come too far, worked too hard, and achieved too much to let anyone drag us back. So tonight, let's make history, let's pass this de restriction and make sure that Ansonia's future is one of industry, integrity, and independence. And of course, let's not forget keeping this site safe and healthy for our residents. The deed restriction you will approve tonight will also prohibit any trash burning facility or combustion-based energy generation. This will ensure only clean energy production such as fuel cells, which do not burn fuel and therefore produce zero emissions. So let's now ensure that the engine of Ansonia's revival keeps roaring, keeps recharging for generations to come. Thank you, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, next, we have Corporation Counsel, John Marini.
Mister President, members of the Board of Aldermen, good evening. President Schuer, sorry to see, uh, the absence of guitars once again on the wall behind you. Oh, look at this, and a new, a new, uh, single cut.
New axe.
Off the wall.
So Josh, for those that are new to the meeting, he plays at the end of the, uh, night, so you've got to wait until after executive session for his.
Eleven PM approximately?
As always, um, as, uh, the mayor, uh, has stated, we have a resolution on the agenda tonight. The approval of that resolution would allow the city to place a deed restriction on its property at the former Copper and Brass, a deed restriction prohibiting housing and prohibiting trash burning and similar, um, uses, uh, specifically, uh, uses involving combustion, which are known to emit, uh, uh, to cause emissions and to be adverse to the public health. Um, so the way this will work is if the resolution is successfully passed tonight, we will create a deed restriction, um, that parallels those prohibitions, and that deed restriction will be recorded directly onto the land records. The only way that deed restriction can be altered or removed is through public referendum, and a public referendum that requires a supermajority, a two-thirds vote of the people of Ansonia in order to alter or to remove those protections. So that is on for later tonight. Um, however, uh, dovetailing with that, um, now is the time. We would like to open up solicitations for the redevelopment of the entirety of Ansonia Copper and Brass, uh, the full sixty acres. And so what we're looking for, and it could be done certainly now, or we could wait until, uh, new business, we're looking for approval from this board to go out to solicit proposals from any interested developers, uh, who have a proposal, a plan for that site. Uh, we want to keep the playing field as broad as possible. Obviously, we will, we will have a threshold in terms of a deposit, in terms of financials and proof of ability that bidders will need to show, uh, to indicate that they are real, to be at the table, um, that they have the capacity, the financial ability to execute their proposal. But we are looking, um, at this point for plans for the full sixty acres, uh, to put in front of the city, uh, their best vision for the future of, of Ansonia and our economic development. So again, looking for your approval on that tonight. Um, elsewhere on the agenda, uh, we have some executive session items coming up. Uh, there's also been some talk about, um, which we'll deal with in, in due course. There's been a lot of talk about Nolan Field, I think in the beginning of this meeting, uh, during public comment, I'm going to defer to those uh, questions and, um, those updates to Mister Joseph Yowman, who's been in the trenches, uh, putting together, um, with our staff, plans for, uh, rounding off the Nolan Field improvements. Um, we've had great reviews, and it was a pleasure to be with you all and the mayor at the ribbon cutting for the field and the Chargers' first game, um, and very appropriately, uh, they won that game and, uh, are motivated to go on, uh, to have an amazing season. Um, hearing very good things, very good reviews thus far, but obviously, we want to do our due diligence to make, uh, the Nolan Field improvements the best they can be. Uh, there's still work to be done, as Joe will update you. Um, in addition to that, I can tell you that union contract negotiations are still, uh, finishing up. We do believe that in terms of being first in line, that we're going to have a contract, a draft contract for the, our clerical unit, it's Teamsters Clerical, by the next meeting. Um, we had made great progress, uh, on that contract with the Teamsters, um, delayed only by, I, I think, uh, some, uh, inability to meet in the last couple of weeks, uh, but we do hope to be rounding that out for you, uh, at the November meeting. Uh, the arms unit is also under negotiation that may be a little later than the November meeting until we get a draft altogether, a consensus on that. Uh, and finally, um, we want to point out to Ansonia families that October thirtieth, so the night before Halloween, is the day for our Ansonia Halloween pizza party at the Ansonia Armory. Um, there will be free candy, free pizza, and a laser show. In fact, two laser shows. As you may have noticed, we did not conduct the laser show at the grand opening of Nolan Field, that was because of logistic issues. Um, the presentation of the, uh, the show inside the armory will go a lot smoother, as we don't have to deal with those variables, um, that are, uh, necessary for a, uh, a spectacular laser show. Uh, so we will be doing two showings, I believe, one at six-thirty, one at seven-thirty, so two different laser shows on the same night, but all through the course of the night, free pizza, free candy, and of course, uh, encouraging people to come, kids to come, families in their Halloween, uh, costumes. So with that, any questions on anything?
Any questions from the Aldermen for John?
Hey, John, no, no question, it's just a statement, I believe all of the Ansonia teams that have played on the new Nolan Field for their, I guess their grand premiere, all the teams have won, if I'm not mistaken, so it's, uh, maybe a little Nolan Field magic happening there, but I believe all the, you know, the soccer and the football teams were successful, I know the Coppers, I'm pretty sure they won as well. Ansonia Boys, I believe, won. Um, I think the Rec Boys also won on there, so maybe a little magic happening at Nolan.
Josh, uh, I have a couple of questions on the proposed, uh, deed restriction for John, are they appropriate now or when we come to that item?
Now is fine.
Um, okay, so first of all, um, I, I wanted to clarify the status of seventy-five Liberty Street. Uh, you're using that address to represent the entire American Brass property?
No, Seven Riverside.
Seven Riverside and seventy-five.
Liberty and also.
Our, our resolution on the agenda says seventy-five Liberty Street.
Yeah, it should also say Seven Riverside and Thirty-five North Main Street.
Okay, so seventy-five, um, Liberty, uh, is actually the former office building of the American Brass Company, which is now a abandoned, burned-out.
Yes.
Uh, multi-story structure, right? And, uh, is that included in the parcel and in the deed restriction?
So it, yes, so the plan is to include both halves of copper and brass, which are Seven Riverside and seventy-five Liberty. Um, so they were actually acquired in two separate foreclosures, they're two separate addresses, and they're both intended to be included. Um, and I would say, in particular, when you're talking about incompatible uses, seventy-five Liberty actually abuts a residential area directly, uh, which has been a problem, um, with respect to those, the, the fire that you mentioned. Also, we, uh, included Thirty-five North Main, which is the SHW parcel, um, which is the first parcel that we acquired that has been just about completely demolished at this point. So we're actually talking about three distinct partial, par, uh, parcels that should be referenced in the resolution, and that would, uh, be included with this, uh, plan for deed restriction.
Okay, the reason I'm asking the question about the actual address seventy-five Liberty uh, is that, for the reasons you point out, that's surrounded by residential, uh, property, um, that is, the neighborhood is, is need some definition of high-density residential property, right? And so wouldn't the highest and best use of that, um, parcel uh, be for housing, apartments, condos, uh, some type of living quarters that would be consistent with the rest of, of that neighborhood where it's located?
So the reason that we disagree with that is because we do believe we need every, uh, every square foot of contiguous property to maximize the benefits that we're looking for. And so it could be possible that a use could, could foresee, uh, a revitalized office space, right? Or simply it could be more, uh, square footage towards a requirement for, uh, a certain manufacturer or a certain industry. We don't want to be breaking the parcel, um, apart, except for those uses that are already dedicated, for example, our plans for a fuel cell, right? But again, all going back to revenue generation, all go, all going back to maximize as many sources of revenue, as many revenue streams as possible for the city. So, um, essentially, our position is, let's preserve as much of it as possible, all of it ideally, so that when bidders are coming in on this solicitation, they have the whole pie to be working with, to sketch out their proposal for how we revive this economic engine. That's why we, we don't want to be eating into it. We do believe that, obviously, housing in Connecticut is important, no one's going to disagree with that. However, I, I, I think, you know, I could speak for the administration when we say that, you know, we've gone above and beyond in terms of trying to satisfy the need for housing in Connecticut, uh, in terms of deed-restricted, uh, affordable housing, we're at over fourteen percent, requirement is ten percent. There are many communities, many wealthy communities, that do not care to do their fair share in terms of helping with the situation uh, in Connecticut. We don't want to create what is already a, a situation of dense housing and make it even worse here in Ansonia. You know, we, this is our one chance to take this contiguous, which is unique, it's unique to have this much property altogether in one place. That's what we mean when we say contiguous.
So.
All of this property is actually available all in one spot, and we want to ensure that this is maximized for revenue and jobs.
So, John, I get all that, I, I agree with it, uh, I'm just questioning the, this particular address, which is.
Actually, a little more than just the office building itself.
Property.
As Sheila can kind of dig into, but that piece, you know, again, even creating a buffer, right? A buffer between the industrial manufacturing uses and those residents already in place, I think is important. Um, so there likely is going to be some consideration at ensuring that whatever uses are separated in some way from the residences that already exist. We, we don't want to have to be putting residences in such close proximity to a manufacturing or an industrial use, just because we could fit them. Um, Sheila, you probably could talk a little more to the wisdom behind that.
Yeah, no, I think, um, seventy-five Liberty Street, I, I believe is over twenty acres. So that's a lar, that's a large swath, large parcel of land, um, which is zoned.
Divided, Sheila, by the track, actually.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not ju, it definitely includes, you're, you're a hundred percent right, it includes the office building, but it's a larger piece than just the office building, it's actually, uh, um, as Sheila describes, not exactly half, but, but a little less than half of this entire large, uh, gigantic facility.
Okay, so I appreciate that clarification. My other question is, uh, what, what is, what are you using as a definition of high density? Is that, you know, I've heard it referred to in a number of ways. Uh, one way, it deals with the amount of population within a square mile. Uh, another real estate, uh, view of it is that, is, you know, something that's like three-family houses, apartments, condos, uh, you know, multifamily housing. Uh, what, what is the, this is going to go into restricted deed, what, what is the definition of high density?
So the resolution calls for a prohibition on housing, period. So in terms of the definition of high-density housing, um, not necessary to go into the weeds, as it is residential housing, period.
So it's housing, not high-density housing?
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
We're talking about densely populated.
But when we talk about the concern about high density housing, it is just that, that if housing is allowed, given the state of things in Connecticut, uh, the way things are going, it naturally will evolve into high density housing. Um, there, there isn't an available parcel out there. Um, that isn't, there, there isn't some attempt to slice and dice i- into as many units as, as humanly possible. And we've experienced this on multiple uh parcels throughout the city. Uh, don't need to go into those uh stories, but we've all experienced the developer trying to put more houses, more units onto a property uh than advisable. Um, so, you know, we believe once the, once it's open, right? Once that uh box is open, it's not going to be shut. So the prohibition on that property, all three parcels that make up this, this, this sixty acre property uh is all housing, housing period.
Okay, and then on the emissions issue, this is my, my last question. The uh, uh, you know, obviously I'm very concerned about this. I, I live a quarter mile from um this area as do several thousand other people. Um, the uh, the, the prohibition on the, or the deed restriction on emissions. Uh, that is any emissions or emissions from burning or can you, can you define that?
Yeah, we describe it as um burning or combustion based energy. So this is when fuel is actually being burned. The mechanism of creating the energy is actually burning fuel. That's different from a fuel cell where there is a um, a chemical process where the energy is extracted from fuel in a very different way, in a way that either produces zero or very, very low emissions compared to your um, your combustion based energy production. Typically, typically uh you see the flame, right? You see an, an actual open flame or closed flame, burning fuel. And that is very well known to uh create emissions. Um, and that's the concern is that emissions could cause.
So, you know, most industry would um emit some type of emissions. Uh, you know, the example would be the uh steel plant that was uh suggested uh during the public comment tonight. But we're not, we're not talking about those types of emissions. Is, am I understanding you correctly?
Good. I would say not for this blanket prohibition. I think we, we know that there's a concern that's been raised by our residents. Look, we don't want trash burning. We're concerned about combustion based energy. This actually goes back to the anaerobic digester proposal from a long time ago, right? We're concerned about that, the flame, right? The tower with the flame. So this is saying, okay, no to that. However, that's not to say that when other proposals come in, that this board can't say, look, we don't feel comfortable with X, right? Um, but we aren't putting a blanket prohibition on it because I, I don't believe we have enough information out there to ban every possible proposal. So, you know, what someone comes in with, it's going to have to be judged by the men and women sitting on this board uh to determine, okay, you know, i- is this use uh safe? Is this use something that we'd like to see on the site? Uh, so there, there's certainly, again, this is the beauty of it. It's not just zoning a use. It's not just um, you know, planning and zoning, looking at what an applicant's bringing in. You own this site and that, and that's really, you can't underestimate that. Um, the Board of Aldermen, the City of Ansonia, our residents owning this sixty acre parcel gives us a very unique position to choose what is going to be located there, to make sure it's the highest and best use for the city, but also compatible in every way uh with how we see the future of our city.
So, so in terms of the wording of the deed restriction, it will deal with emissions, a combustible emission.
It focuses on, it addresses trash burning specifically because that was a concern. But I also broadened it a bit to cons, to, to essentially prohibit combustion based, because I, I believe that is the root of it. Um, that's the root of the concern is the combustion based energy.
Which, which would open the door to other industry that would have some other form of, of emissions.
It, it's always. Yeah, what could be proposed? Um, it's hard to just say emissions because then you get into, okay, well, you know, what are we even talking about? I, I think those proposals would have to come before the city and then the city would have to um exercise its judgment.
So, so do you have the wording of the proposed uh, uh deed restriction that would clarify that?
Yeah, so i- in your agendas, you have that resolution. And Josh, I don't know if you have it available to throw out there or we can, maybe this we could do.
Do this when they get to it. Resolution, but it, it spells out um in that section, the development of any solid waste incinerator, trash burning facility, or any other burning or combustion based industrial facility that poses an environmental or public health.
Right.
A, a, a factory that might have some kind of smoke coming out of the, you know.
Okay. Burning of fuel, again, very specifically creates the hazard and the concern. So, you know, the, the, the intent was to address that specifically and also a bit more, a bit broadly. So that any sort of fuel burning facility would be banned.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions um for Corporation Council? All right, uh, let's move on to the coup. Uh, Laser Joe, who looks like he's ready to land the plane tonight. Hopefully the runway is clear.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. How you guys doing? Fun night, right? So we've had a big uh exciting month and a lot of things going on. Uh, I guess I'll start with um Harvest Festival was a big success. Uh, a lot of people downtown, beautiful day, but everybody got out there. Um, and I want to say, you know, from a operational aspect, everything went very smoothly. And the big thanks to Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department's arms and the Cultural Commission for putting it together and everybody that participated. Um, I know one of the big updates is Nolan Field. Um, as John alluded to, opening night was a big success. Operationally, things went very smooth. We took a, it was a lot of meetings up there planning everything out. Um, and every department reported in that things went well and as planned. Um, security was tight. Uh, we kept things locked up pretty well and everybody away from the active constructives, construction zone. So, and a very big special thanks to everybody that made opening night a success. Um. Progress report, let's see. Um, so Nolan Field, I know Amy had asked. Field B is complete. Uh, that is the soccer field slash secondary football field. That is complete. The fence is up and turf is up. The only thing that is missing there is the scoreboard, which is set to be delivered this week. Uh, and that will be hooked up and run by generator for the duration of this season. Um, there is, I'll get to the update on the electrical, electricals um at the end. But Little League softball field is essentially complete as well. Um, it is fenced, it is turfed, um, and it is pretty much ready to go. I believe the dugouts, like their uh high school baseball field, we're waiting on delivery sometime in November, if I'm understanding it. Um, some of the other project items are um in the works and, and, and kind of moving forward and should be getting going probably this week. Um, after the scoreboard gets, gets put in place, we're waiting on um a couple of things to happen. But Fieldhouse renovations, that discussion is taking place. Um, Thursday, the bathrooms and the storage shed, those things are ready to go, are, are ready to go. It's just a matter of picking the locations, which should be in the center field, in between fields A and B. Um, on the line there, um, the walkway, um, they are ready to start that. There was some um removal and some rock removal. Um, and I also have to, you know, remove the remaining dirt and rock to get that underway. And then there's the remainder of the permanent fencing in terms of the other items. Um, there's, we're, we're waiting on delivery of portable bleachers, portable press box, um netting for field A as well as the portable fencing for the baseball field on field A. So all of that stuff is in the works. Um, in terms, uh, all of that stuff should be ready. Uh, particularly the baseball field, because I know that's been something that's been asked about multiple times. That'll be here. It has to be ordered. It's a large fence. Uh, and quite frankly, if we don't have it on site before the end of the year, I'm okay with that because I'm not entirely sure where we're going to store it. Um, so we have to still figure that out because it's over three hundred uh feet of fencing. Uh, that has to be backed up. So, but that is, that is all in the works. Um. What else? Let's see. Um, operationally, um, MTS, the Municipal Tax, uh, Tax Services and Plate Readers have started. Um, and they're uh making their way around town. We should have a report from the Assessor's Office. Um, hoping by the end of the year, um, hopefully early December. Um, Nolan Field, the field policy, um, there will be every third Tuesday, I believe, is when the rec board is going to be meeting. Um, to discuss, and they're going to be discussing the field policy. I know there's been some discussion uh putting in place um, some policies with regards to uh, you know, taking care of the field. There's been some questions being asked of who's cleaning up and stuff like that. Uh, because of the long weekend, um, Public Works didn't get up there till today. So there was, I heard some comments about that, but that is, that was taken care of today. Um, in terms of the electricity, the reason that the scoreboard is only running off a generator is the, in order to hook up, to have the brand new electrical uh hookup there for field B as well as they have to run a separate um conduit. And that is going to require a shutdown of the entire facility for upwards of a week. So rather than interrupting any of the sports seasons, um, the end of the football season, the end of soccer season, uh, the decision was made to hold off on doing that and until um all sports have ended, if all four, fall sports have ended. Um, and which can, which case, um, I've talked to the engineers from Field Turf. They're able to make that work and work with the um, utility company and have that happen at the end of the year. Um, finally, um, the one li, the one other thing there is on your agenda. Um, uh, proposal from U H Y, which is that technology and risk um assessment that I had spoken about last time. Um, is essentially um looking into and just um doing an overall assessment, technology and risk wise, compliance wise. Um, I'm urging all of you to please vote for it because I think it's the first step in, you know, um, increasing our efficiency, minimizing our risk and modernizing our city's technology.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for um Joe tonight?
Absolutely. I couldn't wait till he get on.
I figured.
Couldn't wait. Okay.
Yes, sir.
We've been having a problem, okay? With that, that, the half of stairs. Not being moved. And they didn't clean up that spot. You got gravel that's on the hill there. There's a hump on one side, but two weeks they have told you that they would remove them stairs.
Yep.
It, it's still there. The fence is falling. That, that's going to fall if it's going to hurt somebody.
Yes, sir. Alderman Rivers, we spoke about this earlier today. I'm on it. I will uh make it so. I, I made a phone call over to Field Turf today. I will follow up tomorrow. Um, and I will have that moved. I know you guys are not back there. Um, high school football team's not back for a couple of weeks, but we do have uh other sports teams that are going to be there. I'd like to get that out of there myself. So, um, I will talk to Field Turf tomorrow and make sure that's gone by the time you guys back up there.
Yeah, because I mean, if they can't do it, okay, then we should do it, okay, and I'll give them the bill for it. I mean, because this is ridiculous.
Yeah, no, it's gonna, it's, it's, it's part of, it's part of that being removed as well as some of the old bleachers. And there's also that fence replacement because I know that fence is kind of, um, as you drive up the hill, it's kind of coming off its hinges. Um, that's going to be fully replaced as well. I've been assured of that as well. It's just a matter of uh, you know, getting them all there on site and getting that stuff moved.
Yeah, all right. I just had to uh.
I got you.
I had to get you a little bit.
Sir Alderman Rivers.
I had to get you a little bit tonight, Joe.
Hey, 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 Joe, I got a question. So about, about the scoreboard and the generator thing. Any, any reasoning why they didn't run that conduit when construction was happening?
It's my underst, it's my understanding. They did not have the opportunity to run it because they had to have uh, there was either too much dirt, too much construction, or they weren't able to get it um completely done. Is the way it was explained to me because they have to, they, they had to have both sides hooked up and they had not done all of the um, everything to lay, lay the groundwork for that time. So that's why they were hoping, uh, they were hoping that they could get it done before field be open, but we want to feel be open sooner rather than later. Um, and that kind of led us to this, led us to this situation. I've been assured that they have a rather quiet generator, so it shouldn't be uh one of the big noisy ones. Um, so it, with the, the way the stands are going to be sitting on the other side of the field, it shouldn't be too noisy or too disruptive.
And secondly, I think Chris was asking, Chris from Filter was asking about the bleachers that were kind of tossed in the middle of the, of the two fields, what to do with them. And I think there was a request if, if, you know, they, instead of discarding them, they were asked if they could send them to Colony. Um, you know, to use for, I guess soccer bleachers and, and other stuff that's there. Do you know where uh, you know, if that's going to happen?
Which, which bleachers are we talking about? Because none of the ones that have been placed behind field A or behind the baseball field are actually, I don't believe in my opinion, and I, I've heard from others, I don't believe they're safe for use at this point in time. I think those are scrap zone.
I think, I think there were three, there were like three sets that were in between, basically like right along the driveway line where the uh, like the snack shack is kind of going from there all the way to almost the gate. There were three sets. They were just there the other night at the opening.
Yeah, yeah, that's um, that's right by the um, the stairs uh that uh they were supposed to uh remove.
We, we get it, Rivers.
The smaller, are those, are those the smaller open ones?
Blue ones, yeah.
I, I think they, Joe, I think, I think they were like somewhere, I think four tier and there was a set, I think that were like six tier, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, it's not the one.
I don't believe it's the, the four tier and the six tier. I don't believe are deemed safe. I think those are, I think those have been deemed as scrap. The, the smaller ones, the one in the two tier, and I think there's one set of three tier um, are the ones that are being uh rerouted and put on the side of the field B right now.
Okay.
Uh, in anticipation of being put on that walkway as the bleachers that'll be used for field B.
Okay, all right.
I can inquire again with Chris and let you know, Tony, but I'm, I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent, all of those have been deemed uh unsafe.
Yeah, because I think he asked if we wanted them moved somewhere or he could just scrap them, he said. He sent the image and he cer, he circled them out, so.
Joe, initially, um, when Tony had asked about the, about a certain few bleachers, um, Chris had said, yeah, we can move them down to Colony or Nature Center or wherever, but so I don't know. I think there might.
I mean, what I can say that, what I can say is this, is that I, they've, they've attempted to move two of them and two of them have completely fell apart. So that's the concern, I think, when they start, as soon as they start to unravel them and move them, the braces, the braces are weak and each of them sort of collapse on top of each other. Um, and because they are open bottomed and they're sort of the older generation. Um, they, they're not recommended for reuse, they're recommended for scrap and, and, and replacement, so.
Yeah, I, I'll defer to you, Joe. If, if they're usable, you know, if, if, if you or Field Turf make that determination, I think there was an ask for them if they could to go to Colony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
He's going to be busy with stairs, so don't worry about that.
Send, send the stairs to Colony too, if Rivers doesn't want them.
Run over to Chicago's house.
All right.
Uh, any other questions for Joe? All right, thank you. Appreciate the, the extensive update. Uh, next we'll hopefully get an economic development report.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Um, just to follow up a little bit on the, on the Ansonia Copper and Brass discussion. Um, we are going, going to go out to bid for the entire parcel, so um hop, hoping for some interesting proposals. Already have some ideas floating out there. Um, and, and also just to follow up as well on the, you know, densely populated. When, when you say that a community is densely populated, it means that there's um, you know, a lot of people in a very small area and we certainly meet that definition. Um, because we're six point four square miles and we have three thousand people, over three thousand people per square mile. As compared to, oh, I don't know, Shelton, that has about a thousand people per square mile. And uh Seymour, I think is even less, maybe even eight hundred or nine hundred people per square mile. So we, we certainly fit that definition. Um, and we certainly do need some revenue generating um parcels of land. And hopefully we'll get that with Ansonia Copper and Brass and your vote tonight. Um, to, to move forward, to, to redevelop it into the industrial commercial center that we need. Um, so quick, couple of quick updates for you. Um, in terms of the animal shelter, the um block construction on the dog kennels uh should be complete by the end of the week. Um, the trusses for the roof, for the um, for the roof are going to be shipped by the week of October twenty-seventh. New sanitary lines for the kennels is, will be dug and connected next week. Um, once the exterior block is finished, they'll install the truss plates and get ready to um have a crane put them in place. Um, once those are complete, so. So uh, once trusses are installed, galvanized metal roof will be installed. Um, and we will have more of an update. Next month for you on um, on how far they have gotten. Um, Olson Drive construction update. I know Alderman Mamon. Is waiting patiently for this update. Um, the construction equipment has been mobilized to the site. Once again, final grading for the installation of the cap is expected to begin Wednesday and Thursday. As it was delayed a couple of days by the rain. Um, the cap will take approximately one to two weeks to install and should be completed. By the end of this month, you'll see a, an orange material type cap. That's going to be placed on the field area um for the safety of anyone who, who's going to use the soccer field. Uh, construction, the retaining walls and stormwater drainage structures are expected to begin sometime the week. Of ten twenty. And the developer has contracted with Field Turf, as a matter of fact. And they are expected to begin installing the drainage for the field around the week of eleven three. Once the drainage is installed, the field will go in. And that's my uh, two updates. Also, um. Remediation work has begun on the extrusion mill. And while the RFP is going to be out, hi- hit the streets. We are gonna continue to spend down the grant funds to remediate and to demolish the rest of the parcel. Um, and so we're, we're continuing to move along with that as well. That's it for now. If there's any questions, I'm hoping there's questions.
Any questions from the Aldermen?
No.
I'm disappointed, but alright, thank you.
Yo, it's Bobby. Uh, it's just bad Trump is so busy right now. I'm sure he'd be interested in that sixty acres.
President Trump?
Yeah.
I th- I think he wants uh, he wants communities to prosper, right? And, and he wants uh increased tax revenue for communities that sorely need it, I, I would imagine.
Thanks, Bobby.
Any other um questions, comments? Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Next we'll go to Chief of Police, Wayne Williams.
Good evening, President Schuer, Board of Aldermen. Uh, I will try to make it brief. Um, we have uh two officers, a personnel update real quick. We have two officers in field training. Uh, one officer is in the academy. We have six open positions. Uh, that we're testing for. The next academy is November. We have a bunch of people in background, so I'm hoping we can grab at least one or two. Um, we also uh have completed all of the backgrounds and interviews. For the dispatcher slot, so I expect to make a job offer this week. And I've already talked to uh Mr. Jowlin about getting the person down there for uh onboarding, so. Um, we are still working on our tier two accreditation. I will tell you that our K nine officer, uh Fowler and his canine are currently in their twelve week session. Up at um, in East Hartford and they're doing really well. Uh, the dog's one of the best dogs in the class. Um, Sergeant Catherine Devlin was sworn in last month as a sergeant. She is currently conducting her sergeant training over the next month, so if you happen to see her on the street, feel free to say hello. Officer Rivero and Officer Santos received certificates of recognition at the Umbrella Sound of Hope Ceremony in uh New Haven. Recently in appreciation of their work with domestic violence victims. Sergeant Rodriguez and Officer Peterson were also honored at the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Ceremony on October third in Mohegan Sun. For their work combating impaired drivers. So we have a lot of things that have been going on and the officers are starting to get some recognition, which is good. Um, the fatal motor vehicle accident from September twenty-fourth is still under investigation by the dete- the Detective Bureau. Um, and we'll, we'll release more information uh when that concludes. Um, I know you spoke about the Harvest Festival. Uh, it went off without any major problems, at least on our end. Um, thank you to all of those that stopped by our table and said hello. Uh, the officers appreciated that. Um, we've been having regular meetings. I mean, we're discussing Nolan Field. Uh, we've been having regular security meetings with uh the city and school officials up, uh having major public events. Uh, Nolan Fields complex. We've had several games at the field. Changes have been going smoothly. Um, and we are working out some of the smaller details uh that need to have some changes when the entire complex is finally uh complete. We're also working on upstaffing the, for the Halloween and night before Halloween as we do every year. So I won't see any of you, but I wanna say happy Halloween to all of you. Uh, and I have, I'm here for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for the chief? Well, you get off easy. Yeah, they see, they see there's like twenty things still to go, so. Maybe they wanna go to sleep before midnight.
Alright, and if there's any haters out there, I just wanna remind you the Patriots are in first place in the AFC East.
There are plenty of haters out there, chief.
Sounded like a swipe at the Jets, but. So, sorry, Bobby. Sorry, Joe.
Going for the first round draft pick.
That's for getting relegated to the lower division, to the minors.
CFL.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, chief. Alright, so so ends uh public official session. We'll move on to financial reports, starting with the finance committee.
Uh, make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
To pay all bills if deemed correct by Mamon, second by Janetti. All in favor? Repose, abstentions, our motion carries unanimously. Next is uh.
Hey, Josh. Did, did we skip Superintendent Joe? Is he not here? Did I miss him? I can't see.
Contacted me, he's not able to be here tonight, so I just.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and. One other thing, um, did we forget about um, um, getting school kids to uh lead us because we sound horrible?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna mention it to him tonight and then he, he wrote to me and said he was not able to make it. I just, I just, to save time, I just didn't, I just plowed past it, but. Yeah, no, we'll, we'll go, we'll get back to that. Hopefully, they enjoyed it and they're certainly better than us.
Before I leave, right?
Oh, yeah. Hey, maybe you'll do, maybe you'll do your final one. Acapella.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so then we have boat recommendations from the municipal report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mamon, uh, second by Rivers, all in favor. Repose, any abstentions? Our motion carries unanimously. Uh, there was no uh request for refunds report this month, so we'll skip that. Um, there were a ton of monthly reports um from the department heads. Town Clerk's Office, Collections, uh Administrator, Nature Center Librarian. Fire Marshal, Tax Collector, Senior Center, uh Arms, Public Works, Land Use, Blight. And I may have missed some, but I think that was, I think I saw reports from all of them. Just wanted to, to thank all of them for their, for their work and their, their monthly report and seeking a uh.
Motion to accept all the reports and thank them.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon, all in favor? Can you oppose?
Mr. President? I was just gonna say, just for, for the board's uh information, I have the department reports coming to me about a week early at this point in time. Um, so if anybody has any questions, anybody wants to know these things, I'm trying to review them and stay up to date and ask any questions that I think. The board may be asking in advance, so if anybody has any questions from any of the department heads, uh, you can contact me.
Good to know.
I'll reach out tomorrow, Joe.
There you go, cool, cool.
Putting myself in the line of fire, I realize.
Appreciate that.
That's, that's really excellent and it gets it in on time, which has been an issue in the past, so appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely. Happy to help.
Hop in the hood on this. Thank you, Joe and, and all the department heads. Um, let's see, we voted on that. Moving on to accents and claims, we had one. Claim zero nine two five ten eighty-one, Daniel Jaworski versus Charlene Willis. At all.
Motion to refer to court counsel.
Second.
By Mamon, second by Rivers to uh refer to counsel, all in favor? Repose. Alright, motion carries unanimously. Uh, we had four communications. Most of these are pretty straightforward. The first one's from me. This was a nomination from the uh Fire Commission last month um. To appoint uh Richard Rick Sturgis as a new member of the Ansonia Fire Police. He's a current um. Member of the Fire Department um for fifty plus years. And uh seeking to become a member of the Fire Police and he was uh approved by the Fire Commission at their last meeting.
Motion to accept, Josh. Oops, sorry, Joe. No, let me, let me retract it, Joe. You can make it.
Yeah, I make a motion except which services for our fire police.
Motion by.
I'll second it.
Second by Mamon, all in favor?
Thanks, Tony.
Alright.
Yeah, sorry, Joe.
Thank you.
No worries, no worries.
Uh, second um message, uh communication is from the chief. I see he's on here, hopefully to answer questions if we have them. This was, the second uh communication was. Uh, request to transfer the former mass casualty trailer to the Department of Public Works. This is a lateral transfer of city equipment. Public Works wants it, Arms doesn't need it.
Make a motion.
Motion by Rivers.
Second.
Pointed this, I got a point of discussion.
Second by uh Joe Cassetti and then discussion. Go ahead, Mamon.
Wha- what is, what's, what's Public Works intention with this?
Uh, do not know. I know what Arms intention was, to get rid of it.
Yeah, and they did uh, they did talk to them, so they. They said that they could use it, so.
Did, did, uh, did, did Arms get another one, Josh?
Uh, Mike, you wanna speak to this?
We did not, we did not get another trailer. Uh, we received the old rescue truck that we used to have that we gave to the Fire Department. We received that back and as the workforce has changed over the years. We've had less employees that are qualified to drive trucks and trailers. So we transitioned the rescue truck into a rehab slash mass casualty vehicle. So if there's a need for it, we're able to just jump in it and respond as opposed to having to hook a trailer up and. Make sure we have qualified people on every shift to be able to drive it. So the rescue truck has taken the, the place of that trailer and we no longer need it. Uh, speaking with Superintendent. Um, Holman, he said it would be good for the building department. It has shelves and stuff built inside. Um, so he said it would work out well for them for that purpose.
I'll just, I'll just add, I, I could just say, uh, Tony, that um. Tim had said that uh they can utilize it for bringing supplies to and from buildings if necessary and moving things uh throughout the city in a little bit, a little bit easier.
Okay.
Any other uh questions on that? Alright, we'll sort of a motion and a second. All in favor of um approving the transfer? Aye.
Aye.
Repose, abstaining. Motion carries unanimously. Third communication from a familiar name, also Chief Warhola from Arms. Um, this was uh outlined in uh as two options that um, this was uh regarding Bravo ten. Uh, maybe you wanna speak to that a little bit in uh the discussions that have been had so far, chief?
Sure, I'll give a little bit of background. Um, Bravo ten is our two thousand and thirteen ambulance. And I would say for probably the past six to nine months, we've been chasing mechanical after mechanical after mechanical issue with it. Up until, over the course of the summer, we finally suffered a critical mechanical failure. Um, and the engine now needs to be replaced. Uh, I spoke with the Arms Commission and we went over several different options as to what we can do to get. This vehicle or another vehicle back in service. Uh, one of the options was to replace the motor, which is outlined in the letter that I sent to President Schuer. Um, as well as a remount, which would be taking the actual box off of the existing ambulance and putting it on a brand new uh cabin chassis. Uh, those were the best two options uh that the commission. Discussed and decided to move forward with. There were other options we discussed, which was the purchase of another new ambulance. Which did not seem feasible to rectify the situation at the time. Uh, it would be at least another three to four years before we were to get it. And that would not help us out at this situation at all. Um, and the other would be to buy a. Used vehicle, which you don't know what you're getting at that point. Uh, so the best two options were to either replace the motor or look for remount. And obviously there is significant um financial obligations both ways. Um, and then after speaking with the Arms Commission, I went over and spoke with Mr. Yaman about it. And it was decided that it needs to be pushed to the Board of Aldermen for discussion and see which path we need to take.
Okay, and just to recap for anyone that has that communication in front of them, the. The, there were four options that were presented to the commission and the two, I guess, most viable ones were. Uh, option one and option two that were um presented in the letter. Option one. Was to replace the motor on the existing twenty thirteen ambulance at a cost of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, for the, for the uh motor. And then there could be potential further expenditures if there were items found, uh, two to three month turnaround. Uh, once it's approved, no guarantees, obviously, uh beyond uh getting a new uh motor and uh. And then, you know, it's still gonna be on, on the um, on the line for a replacement down the road. And then the second option was to remount uh Bravo ten. I'm gonna let, let you in a second uh explain what that means. Um, uh Bravo, uh remount Bravo ten onto a new cabin chassis. So you basically end up with a new um. Essentially a new um vehicle. Costs is approximately three hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, a little bit longer turnaround, four to six month, um, but it's a complete restoration. Um, and it's completed by the A E V vendor. And then that gives you the seven year warranty. Does that pretty much cover it, chief?
Yes, that definitely covers it. Um, the one thing that I'm gonna add in is the remount is basically. Your best option to get Arms back in a position where vehicles aren't reaching the end of life. Uh, ambulances are usually slated between seven to ten years before they need to be replaced. When, before we went out to referendum, we had discussion in one of these meetings as to whether we wanted to do. The two new ambulance purchases or the remount. At that time, a remount was not a viable option because we would have had to take two ambulances out of service for that. Uh, and it wouldn't have gotten us where we needed to be and would have left us severely shorthanded at the time. Uh, we are in a position now where if the board decided they wanted to go through with a remount. It would basically put three ambulances almost brand new. Basically, brand new. Uh, the two new ones that would be delivered and then this one. This one would go back on a Ford warranty. It would be done through our A E V vendor, which is the one we bought the two new ambulances. So it would stay in uh uniform for vehicles, so it would still be one vendor that we dealt with. And everything would get redone on this vehicle. They would take the box off. While the paint would be stripped, they would repaint everything to match. It would get a new floor in the back. They would fix any cabinetry that's needed. They would put the liquid suspension in it. All new striker products would go into it. So it would basically be a brand new ambulance that's delivered to us in four to six months when it was completed.
Okay, um, we, we appreciate. Appreciate the coup pushing this to, to us.
Well, I just wanna add one more, one additional thing, Tony, before you ask your question, if I can, um. They're currently, you know, I mean, obviously we're, there's gonna be two replacements for Bravo six and Bravo eight. Bravo and set, Bravo seven and Bravo nine do not have a plan. There is no capital rotation currently. So we are looking, there'll, there'll be two replacements coming brand new. Um, the uh remount would put us in a situation where we have. Three essentially new ambulances for a period of time. But unless we get in that capital rotation that we're constantly talking about, we're gonna incur these costs and not, and not have them planned for. So it's really, it, it's really a matter of getting these in a capital rotation, which I've talked to the chief about as well and, you know, we are in agreement, I think, about that, right, chief?
Absolutely, and just to add on to that, since uh Joe brought it up, by the time if we did a remount. By the time the remount was completed and then the two new ambulances came in. That would put our two remaining ambulances, which are both two thousand seventeens. One would become the spare piece and one would stay as one of the frontline pieces. So you would only have one frontline piece approaching the end of life at that point, being a ten year cycle of twenty twenty-seven. So we would, it would put us perfectly in line to start that capital replacement plan and we wouldn't be behind the eight ball. And we wouldn't be behind the eight ball.
Questions or comments from, from the Alderman? One, one's a long-term plan, one's an immediate plan.
I had a, just a, what's, what is a full replacement run, Chief?
When we purchased the other two about a year, year and a half ago. It was about the cost that this remount was listed for. So if the remount is now being listed at that, I'm expecting a new one is probably up and over four at this point, if not even maybe mid fours.
So that gets, so is there any other like new technology in the box? Cause even the box is now what? It's approaching. You know, twelve, thirteen years old. Is there other new technology or other things that come? With a new box? Because again, if we're gonna. We're going to spend. You know. Three hundred plus thousand on a remount. Is there other additional technologies or whatever we're getting, you know, for? Fully new.
So we're lucky to some extent, um, speaking with the A E V, um, vendor, if he did the remount. He was going to go through and reuse the majority of stuff that he could to keep costs down. Um, now the majority of the stuff he was going to reuse was going to be some of the LED lighting that's in the back of the box or the. Warning lights on the outside of the box, which are minimal replacement value. Um, but he was going to reuse them because there's nothing wrong with it, no reason to not reuse it. Uh, the majority of the wiring and everything would stay in the box. They would update whatever they needed to. But outside of that, technology wise, the only thing that there would really be would be technology for the radios. Everything else is more or less, um. Just EMS items that we would bring in and out of the vehicle. So. It wouldn't be anything that would have to go through the manufacturer, except for the striker products, the power load and the power suspension. Which would all get redone through the vendor as well.
Okay. Alright, that's fair. And then I, I guess for which either way that we go. And maybe it's a, a chief or a Joe question, or I don't know if Rich is on, but, um. Do we have a line for this if we're going to authorize this? Where is this coming from?
There is nothing budgeted for this tone. This is a, um, they were.
Over here.
As far as, yeah, I mean, there's nothing budgeted and to my knowledge, there's, you know, we don't have our budget director on, obviously, but, um. To my knowledge, there's, I don't know what line this would come out of, so it would take some doing and some discussions with finance to figure out where we're going to get the money.
Motion to remount. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Cassetti and a second by Rivers to do the remount option, um. Do we have any further discussion on this? If we, if we go with that. That's, uh, was it three sixty-four? What's our, what, what's our path? Going forward.
Look for the money.
Path forward for what, Josh?
Our, what's our path financially, um, to go forward with that? I mean, the, the other ones, the other option is twenty-five thousand. Obviously, that's. Way more doable, but, um, looking at the long term, I mean, I, I get both arguments.
Oh, yeah, that, that was the question on where, where is finance going to get this from? Is it a? You know, uh. Something from the fund? Is, is there, well, obviously it would have to be from the fund because there's nothing else to, uh. There's no line open for it.
I would think that's probably right, Tone, because I don't see any other mechanism that's going to allow us to fund this if, if passes, so. Uh, it would probably come from the fund to, uh. Having been cut already and, you know, I'm. Every day dealing with finance, just looking, looking for ways to, to, to get through things that are, you're popping up here and there, so.
It's probably going to be. This is a necessity. So, so even, even if, um, we went for the, the cheaper. Um, just the engine that would also have to come out of funds also. Uh, am I correct?
Yeah, it's, it's a much smaller, it's, it's a much smaller fine though, Chicago.
Right, yeah, 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 I know that, yeah.
We might be able to find twenty-five thousand dollars outside of the fund, but three sixty, three sixty-five, three sixty-four, I don't think we're going to find anywhere else. We might be able to find a portion of it. But, um, you know, without having talked to Kurt or, um, Kim. Be hard for me to say we're going to get it from anywhere else, so.
So do you guys really want to pin them in the corner like that? Without knowing the full picture?
No, I, I think you need a finance picture, but you have a, a motion and a second, but.
No motion, a second, I know, but I'm, I also sit on the, the Arms Commission and I.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I would say, um, if we could, if we could. Modify that. Motion that, um. We want the three sixty. If we can't have it, then. We'll go for, uh, the engine change. If they can find the three, the, the, uh, three sixty, then fine. If they can't. Then we go for, uh, the new engine.
Well, Chief, how many miles, how many miles are on that chassis?
You're muted.
Tell him again. You're muted, Chief. You're muted.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I'm looking to see if I have that listed in front of me. Um, I'm going to say we're probably in the seventies. Um, unfortunately, it's not the miles that really does us in. It's the engine hours. So all of our, all of our vehicles go for maintenance based on the hours and, um. It's the hours that kill it with the sitting and the idling. Looking at the estimate from Frank's Garage for the repair, he actually, he has it listed at ninety-seven thousand, so the mileage is higher than I thought. Um, so we're at ninety-seven according to his estimate.
Mm-hmm. No, and, and I get that, you know, sitting idling, and that's, that's a lot of what it is, but I was. Just trying to think of the, the rest of the condition of, you know, the cab and everything else, if it's. You know, not that high. Yeah, you know, kind of the same thing. You have an aging, somewhat of an aging asset. It doesn't make sense to. You know. Put twenty-five grand into it to. Extend it out. I think he said another. With a six or seven years, something along those lines and then. You know, potentially remount at that point, if, if that's the case. Or. Spend it now and it's good for another seven years or something.
Yeah, but if we don't have, uh, the money to do that now. Then we're. You know, stuck with one choice.
Yeah, I, I, I think the engine, you know, based on, you know, that's a lot of idle time and stuff like that. The engine does. Makes sense, assuming there's no other. Transmission issues, anything along those lines, but.
Right, but exactly.
So just to throw out there, just so that everybody has a clear picture. Um, we haven't had to do it with this vehicle, but we replaced the transmission last year in one of our vehicles. Um, we've replaced the turbo in another vehicle. And. The turbo was Bravo eight, which is our two thousand eleven. And the transmission was. It might have been eight or nine. I'm not sure which one, um, but I'm thinking Bravo nine, which is actually two thousand seventeen. Um, so. Obviously it comes down to the finance and we are going to be thrilled with whatever we can to get this vehicle back in service. But thinking of a long-term solution, the best option is the remount. Because I can't guarantee you that with the way. We've been chasing problems that we're not, I'm not going to be back here. Talking to you again in three months because we had something else happen. That vehicle this year has had the, um, exhaust system taken out of it. We've had to replace sensors in it. It wasn't idling correctly and it's just been one thing after the next. But it will help solve the problem for the time being.
Yeah, but this, this new motor that you're talking about, this is like intake to oil pan, new turbo, new everything?
I believe so. It's a box motor. So it would come straight from the Ford factory timeframe, depending on if they have it in stock or what the case may be. Uh, and from my understanding, it's a pull the motor out, drop the new motor in. I don't know what they would have, if there's stuff that they would have to switch over. Um, but I was just given the fair warning that just be prepared if we take this out. Anything that breaks along the way would be an added cost to get put back together.
I just wanted to make it clear that, uh. The Arms Department makes money for the city. I don't know where we are, but we got to be close to seven or eight hundred thousand dollars a year. As income coming into the city. This is a necessity. This is not a, uh, a frill. We need another vehicle on the road. And it's got to be ready to go. If anything happens to one of the others, if we decide to just stand around and have problems with this one. The, if something happens with one of the others and we're down to one ambulance, there's going to be a sacrifice in some service. And I don't want to see that.
I, I, I don't either, Joe. And I think that's going to be a temporary thing. But you do have, you know. Other communities, we support the other communities as well, so, you know, maybe time for them to potentially step up temporarily and help us out.
Oh, I like that.
So we can figure this out.
That's right. That's why I'm not afraid to, uh, to make this, uh, motion because there's got to be money out there for us. One way or the other.
Can, I would suggest having this discussion with finance prior to. Right? And then coming back to the board, I don't, I mean. You have to figure out where you're going to get that money from.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
How long has this been going on with this vehicle, Mike? Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that. Time is of the essence here.
We've been, we've been chasing mechanicals with the vehicles for, with that vehicle in particular for. At least a minimum of six months until this failure happened. Uh, the vehicle has been out of service now since. The first or second week of September, um. We were told not to try using it, so it's just been sitting at our garage. Um, I will tell you and reassure the board that there has not been any sacrifice at this point. Um, or loss of service to anyone because the vehicle is sitting out of service. Uh, that is one of my major concerns and one of my major fears and. We had one situation this past weekend when we had the harvest festival where every single ambulance we had was tied up with. Either coverage for the city, football standbys, harvest festival standby, um. And we were able to get through. We needed four of the vehicles, but we were able to get through. Um, my only fear is that if we suffer a mechanical failure or something that's going to be out of service for a while. We are waiting to hear back from our mechanic as to when he could take Bravo nine, one of our seventeens. Because it's got some type of oil leak to it and he's hopefully taking that tomorrow. Hopefully it's a quick fix and it's back, but that could end up being down for a week or two, depending on what the case may be. So while we haven't had any issues and there has been no lack of coverage from us for anything at this point. I just wanted to make everybody aware that if things happen. We can obviously end up running into that issue.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, hey, Josh, do you think if we were to? You know, maybe table this for finance? And again, I know you have a motion in a second, but if we were to table this for finance, could we? Potentially get a meeting, you know, in the next two weeks, like an emergency meeting, just to, just to make sure this. Happens, because I don't think it could wait another month before we do this. However, I don't know if we're in a, a financially good spot tonight to make that decision without a recommendation from finance.
Mike, has, have you, have you sat down with finance?
I have not sat down with finance. We briefly had a quick conversation, um. Joe and myself and Kim, and that was why we decided the best path was to come to the Board of Aldermen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Tony and just sort of playing it safe and, and we could easily have an emergency, you know. A one, one agenda item meeting to. You know, to approve something, um, whatever the option is, but I. To go forward without knowing what finances thoughts are and then say, go chase three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars?
Well, I gave you an option. You, you. You either chase that or you chase the, um, the twenty-five thousand.
I mean, neither one's fun, but.
No. We got to do the remount. We got to get. I mean, if we don't have it to do the remount. We're going to end up. With, you know, the twenty-five thousand. I would love to do the remount, but I just don't see it happening. Well, we got to do it. We make enough money to do it.
Chief, I can, I can make the. Suggestion that I can take point and try to grab a meeting with, uh, the chief and finance and. Um, you know, get, get something to, to you guys for more information, uh, for a special in the next week or two.
Okay, Joe.
Right.
Come, come back with something good, though.
Can you guys wrap in?
My best, Joe.
Do you wrap in what the price of the new one is? If it's comparable to the, I mean, the remount's three sixty-four, if it's. If you're, you know, if you're going to extend the life of the two thousand thirteen with a new motor. Your next move might not be a, a remount beyond that. You may just go to a new one down the road.
Yeah, but that's two years, though. That's about two years to get a new one.
Timeframes, I understood it. It's nine months for the remount. It's two years for the new one.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
I know, I know those timelines.
Yeah, yeah, you should know.
I'll poke, I'll, I'll poke finance in and I'll, I'll get you guys more information for us.
Please, and thank you. Do you need me to withdraw?
You're going to withdraw your, your motion?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion. Table it.
And I'll make a motion to take no action until we hear back from finance.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers. Take no action until we hear from finance. Joe, you're the point man. If you need any of us to dip in on that. Maybe Tony. Uh, the finance department.
Yeah, Chicago, the Chicago's the chair arms, right? So I'll look Chicago in and, and chief and, uh. We'll get together with the meeting of finance.
Chief, we'll make that right for you. Don't you worry.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for your support, everybody.
We appreciate, appreciate everything.
Thanks, Chief.
Alright, uh, do we vote on that?
Vote on that.
Yeah.
You need to vote on that, Josh?
Yeah, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? Alright, motion carries. Thanks again, Chief. Alright, and then staying in the old emergency services realm, communication four, if I haven't scared them away yet, this is from Chief Williams. Uh. They have some new, um, cruisers coming into their rotation and as such are requesting to. Um, transfer one of the two thousand thirteen Ford Explorers to the Fire Department and to scrap the second one. That's the, so again, a request of existing property.
Put that engine in the ambulance.
Yeah, there you go.
Kidding. Kidding.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by our second by Mamon to, to approve as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Thanks for.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, what we got here? See, uh, appointments, we have one, um, one appointment of. Um. One proposed appointment for the Ansonia Housing Authority. Um, a recommendation from the mayor to reappoint Lori Vaccaro. Republican of five fifteen Beaver Street, term to expire ten thirty-one, twenty thirty.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Cassetti, second by Tar, all in favor? Me opposed? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your service. Uh, we have the one late resignation that came in. Uh, that's Tom Brockett resigning from the Parks and Rec Board, just. Um.
Motion to accept the resignation.
And.
Send him a, a nice letter.
For no.
And send him a letter of thanks for his ser, and send him a letter of thanks for his service.
For not serving. Uh, um, motion by Mamon. Second by Tar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Alright, motion carries. I'll just note. He didn't serve on that, so just.
Mr. President, he did make a recommendation for his replacement, uh, which is to the mayor, so that will be before you guys next month.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
I think by charter, that has to be someone from the school, correct?
Yes, it, I believe it, I believe his, his recommendation was the football coach, uh, if recollection serves. Um, just because I think they wanted everybody to. Be sports related and he's kind of overseeing everything, so.
Okay. Alright, um. Do we vote on that? Think so, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, resolutions. We got three resolutions, resolution one. These were all in your packet.
Yeah.
This is, the number one is the one that was discussed, uh, extensively when John and, um, and Steve had some questions on that. This is the deed restriction. On property, you want me to read it?
Motion. Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti.
I have a point of discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, you know, I just wanted to thank, you know, Mayor Cassetti and obviously the administration for. Really just looking at every option available for Ansonia, you know, obviously not everything is going to be. A good fit, but you know, obviously. I think, you know, incinerating trash for energy is not a good fit for Ansonia. I think, you know, housing is, is not a good fit for Ansonia for that. Parcel of land, so, you know, I just wanted to thank the mayor for. Always keeping the options open, you know, considering all things and then obviously looking at them from a long-term perspective. And what it's going to do for the residents of this city, so. Thank the mayor for that, but. Thank the mayor for that, but um, otherwise I fully support this.
Good use.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Josh, I wanted to, I wanted to offer a um, an amendment to this. Um, you know, I, I uh, I, and I would explain that, I um. In the plan, in the city's plan of uh, of conservation and development, which is available on the website. Uh, this entire site is listed for mixed-use development. Now, I understand that the uh, the, the thinking has changed on that and I certainly agree with the. Necessity of using this site to produce. Uh, revenue as it's our only available industrial site outside of the industrial park. Um, but um, I think one of the reasons why the mixed-use appeared in the, in the plan of conservation and development. Uh, is that you've got that, that office building right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And that should be residential. Um, I, I'm, I'm all, all on board in terms of the um. Um, you know, the banning of combustion and combustible materials, but I'd, I'd like to see an exemption. Uh, on that, on that portion of the seventy-five Li- Liberty Street parcel. So that the um, former um, um. American Brass Office Building can be used uh, for a, or at least could be open for use. Um, for residential use.
We have a motion on the floor with a second.
Let him talk.
Well, I'm trying to offer an amendment to the, to the.
Well, we first have to vote on what's on the floor.
That property is zoned heavy industrial.
Say that he's offering an alternative.
Guys, Steve is talking, let him.
Okay, I'm just saying that property is zoned heavy industrial, just so everyone knows, okay?
Allowed to discuss and he's allowed to propose an amendment.
Okay.
My, my amendment would be limited to that. Uh, I, I also think it would be important before. Committing that, that uh, uh, portion. To uh, irrevocable industrial use, for us to have some type of a notice to the residents who live there. Uh, or, you know, a public hearing, um, so that, that they, they could have some uh. Some input in terms of what would be going in uh, next to them. Uh, and, and this is a burned-out building now, it's blighted. Uh, I think the city bears a heavy responsibility here uh, to that neighborhood in terms of it's um, some type of compatible use. That will enhance uh, the, the neighborhood. I would also point out that right next to there, to that is the pumping station. Which will be coming out. Um, due to the efforts of Save the Sound and the, and the um, Kenny Dam Project. And that will allow that area for the first time to have access to the Noxug River. That is not blocked by a, a flood wall. So, for all those reasons, I think that all points in the direction of. Some type of residential development consistent with the neighborhood there. Um, if, if, if it's only that, that portion. Uh, of the seventy-five Liberty Street process, however you wanted to find it, you know, a hundred feet. Um, uh, around it, but I'm, I'm just not comfortable with that. Um, being irrevocably, um, you know, designated uh, for, for industrial use. I think the rest of the motion, I'm. I, I'm totally supportive of, so I would offer that as, as an amendment for your consideration.
Okay, let me just explain how, how this works. So there, there's a motion for an amendment. Uh, so first of all, you would need, you need a second, and then if you get a second, we would vote on that, and if it passes, then it gets added on to the original. Um, motion, so we'll take up the amendment first. Your amendment is to allow housing on the seventy-five. That piece, the seventy-five Liberty?
Well, seventy-five Liberty is the whole parcel. Uh, I'm just talking about the office uh. Property, the, the former office property, which is now the burnt-out. Hall of the building in the middle of residential area uh, on Liberty Street.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second. King.
Second by King to amend. All right, so we'll vote on the amendment first. This is to allow housing. On this property. Which. Um, basically really decreases the um. You need restriction, but um.
Well, my, my motion or my amendment, Josh, is to exempt. The um, that particular property from the uh, constraints of the um. Of the uh, restricted deed.
Hey, Josh, mo- point of discussion, so. You have a motion in a second from, I, I guess originally from Chicago, right? So now we're entertaining an amendment to a motion.
Right.
Yes, that's.
Why does Chicago give the okay to amend his motion?
He didn't, that's why I said that before. Why would we be entertaining that?
I would not, I would not amend my.
And I second it, we should not amend it. We need to first vote on what was already on the ta- on the floor.
So. Johnny, can you, can you?
Stop, stop. That's not how Robert's rules works. The amendment gets taken up first. If the amendment fails, we're back to point zero. If you guys vote for the amendment, then it's gonna get thrown in, then there's an exemption in there. So if you don't want it to pass, then you have a motion in a second on the amendment, vote no on it and it's dead, and then we move on to the, the thing.
Okay, no. No.
So, all in favor of the amendment to have the exemption for that building? Yet, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, so uh, eleven to two. Two being Adamowski and King. Motion for an amendment fails. Now we're back to the original. This is how the stuff works, bro. And now we have an, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor of the resolution as worded?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Oppose, King.
One opposition, King, any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
One abstention, Adamowski. Motion carries, um. One against, one abstention and the rest in favor. All right, moving on. Resolution number two, also in your packet. Acceptance of five hundred thousand dollar DECD grant award for renovation and reconstruction of the animal shelter. At two division street, Ansonia.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Mamon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed? The abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Third uh, resolution. Acceptance of eight million dollars DECD grant award to undertake redevelopment of thirty-five North Main Street. Seventy-five Liberty Street and seven Riverside Drive, Ansonia.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Tar, who was the second around that?
Second.
Me. Not sure, was that Mello?
Mello, second.
Just a, a question on that?
Oh, yeah.
The, the eight billion dollars is for remediation?
Remediation, demolition and redevelopment.
So.
And by the way, we own the pump station, Steve. So, any, any, anything they do with the pump station has to go through the city of Ansonia.
Okay, well, there, there, there are grant calls for removal of the pump station.
Yeah, I know it does.
I mean, it's part of the removal of Kitty, Kitty Town Dam.
Yep.
Okay, so, so can you be a little more specific on this, on this eight million? This is for soil testing, demolition? Uh, what?
Remediation, access road, site pad creation and renovation wherever. You know, deemed necessary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is a, a state grant.
Those are state funds, yep.
All right, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's see, moving on, we have nothing under ordinance. Under new business, uh, we got the coup waiting in the wings, coming back for the proposal for a citywide. Technology consultant.
Make a motion.
Uh, okay, motion by Rivers. To approve. Wait a second.
Second.
Second by Cassetti, is there any discussion on this or any questions for Joe?
Just a question, just a question on the cost.
I think that was in the packet.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the last page. Um, it should be ten thousand or under, Steve.
Okay.
They wanted to do, they offered a flat fee of ten thousand for all services.
Thank you.
Yeah, other questions? Some, someone else had a question?
Joe, you have a line identified for that?
I do.
Okay.
Yep, and I would.
Joe, you're gonna present?
You wanna tell us?
I'm happy to. Um, I had discussions with three different companies. Um, RSM, Aprilio, as well as U H Y. Um, come to find out, RSM was actually acquired, Aprilio actually acquired RSM, but. Long story short, Aprilio was not able to offer us anything, so this is the only proposal that I got back. I did have a meeting with them. Um, there's no guarantees that we have to go forward with them, but they do promise to give us a full audit. Um, using the, the N I S T and cybersecurity framework. Um, standards to tell us where, you know, what we're risking. Discovery, like, like their approach, the discovery, the testing, the analysis, the reporting, we'll have a full report to be able to determine where to start. And one of the big things that we spoke about was, you know, laying out a, a plan going forward. Over multiple years, understanding the municipal budget cycles and things like that, um, and they offered to uh, to assist us with that and be able to put that in the report.
This is long overdue, really commendable that you're uh, you're doing this.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, um, so we have the motion in a second. Any other questions for Joe or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Lewis Proud, oh, we, we. Um, next up is uh, under new business was a suggestion of considering to reschedule the November. Uh, Alderman meeting because it falls on Veterans Day. What are your thoughts on this? Actually, the week before on Tuesday is Election Day, then it's Veterans Day. We could do a non-Tuesday, we could do the week after.
Can we do the Wednesday after?
Yeah.
But the Wednesday.
What, the twelve?
You gotta check on other meetings.
Yeah, what else is scheduled?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, Wednesday, uh, okay, so maybe Wednesday?
Wednesday or the following Tuesday, Josh?
Josh, can I just say that would have to be a special meeting, so would.
Yes.
Only what's on the agenda can be, or you could skip it.
Or we could, we could have it on Veterans Day, or we could either have it on Veterans Day, skip, uh, cancel it or have it on a special, as Beth said. Any of those three options.
Are, are there any Veterans Day activities scheduled that evening?
There might, there might be, Steve, I don't. I don't know.
Hey, hey, Josh, could we, could we, I, I guess we're not gonna know what we need to discuss in November if anything is pressing, but. I would say if there's anything that could wait, can we? Defer it to December? Or just skip it, basically? Can we leave that up to you to decide based on the agenda and items that need to be discussed?
You guys gonna go?
Get the ambulance.
Yeah, Joe, we got things to do and that's my last meeting. I'm not missing it. So. So stop calling, stop trying to push it out.
Hey, yeah.
All right, do we guys wanna uh, leave it as is and then just play it by ear as it gets closer?
Yeah, leave it as is, I would say.
Leave it as is for now.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
Yeah, 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 I'm good with that.
Okay.
Motion to leave it as is?
Yeah, it's just, it's not a business day at City Hall, we're closed, so. Factors in, oh, wow.
I second that.
All right, so um, basically no action by Mamon, right? Second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll play that one by ear then. Um, old business, uh, is the um. Appointments to the sports advisory panel uh, to the Parks and Rec, uh, three-year terms. Expiring six thirty, twenty twenty-eight. This is the list uh, that was floating out there um. In June. And so that's the same ones. There was a comment about adding another person to represent soccer, or not soccer, softball.
Girls softball, yeah.
Yeah. But uh, what do you guys wanna do with this? There's two, four, six, eight, nine representatives that. Uh, previously worked uh, with the administration in conjunction with the rec, rec um, committee. Um.
Motion to accept the slate.
I like, uh, can we do that?
Uh, can we, um?
Do you wanna do them individually?
Can we add, uh?
You got them?
Can we add that person?
And add that person, yes.
Well, that's supposed to come from the mayor. I don't think we can just randomly add people that the.
Okay.
Mayor, so we could, next, whenever we have the meeting, we could throw, throw somebody on there, though.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are you guys good with the slate as it is? The coaches representing all the different sports?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Cassetti.
Josh, can I, it's Beth, um, they had Rob Leacy listed as AHS softball, but that's an error, so he would have to be admitted, uh, omitted. Cuz you already have a, a little, he was Little League, but you also already have a Little League representative, so.
I'm not sure why he was listed as AHS softball, cuz he's.
Does that, does that look to be an error, Beth? Um, is uh?
Yeah, he has no, he's not involved with high school softball. His daughter's not.
I don't, I don't think he's involved with Little League softball either.
So if um, maybe we could, we could even bring it back after executive session.
He is. Little League.
If we can get Jeff Capola, maybe even after the executive session, just to confirm what the intention was, cuz if it's an error, we could fix it. If it's, if it's something more than that, we'd have to retool it. But if we could reach out to Jeff and maybe bring it back after the executive session, so we don't have to make people wait. Okay. All right. Call out to Jeff Capola and, and let's get in touch with him in the meantime. And confirm what the intention was there, cuz I know who buys the mayor on those names. Okay. All right, so we'll bounce that for now and come back. Um, just don't, let's not forget. Um, so that ends the, the uh, regular session. We have four. We uh, did we vote to send? The entirety of copper and brass out to bid? That's not on the agenda.
Why?
The agenda.
What's that?
We could add it to the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
It's a regular meeting.
That's business.
Um, I make a. A motion to send it out, uh, for bid.
Second.
Motion. Remember, vote and amend the agenda to keep it under new business where it would appropriately belong.
Okay.
All right, motion by Rivers. You, you two stray from the agenda and put that on. Add a, add an item onto the agenda under new business. Okay, let's, is that you, Rivers?
Yes.
Still, second by Cassetti?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we are back. Under new business. Now. What would you like, Rivers?
Motion to. Go into executive session.
Oh.
Wait, wait.
We're going out to bid.
Yeah, now you gotta put the motions out for the bid.
Okay.
I was just to add the item, I was just to, to add it.
Oh, oh, that was the added, okay, um. Motion uh, to go out, uh, to bid on. The fossil.
ECB.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Cassetti to put the uh, parcel out to bid, all in favor?
Hey, can, can we have some? On this?
Yep, sure.
John, don't we need to have bid specs in front of us to approve to do this?
No. So.
No, that's going out.
So, we're going to create the specifications, however, as you know, you know, in terms of designing and approving bid specs, um, that's something the board doesn't always approve. You certainly approve the returns, this, you know, the, the results of the solicitation. But in this instance, you know, our, our specs are going to be broad. As we stated at the beginning, the intention is not to tailor this to any specific types of development at all. The intention is a broad solicitation that allows as many, uh, different types of proposals as possible. And so what we're really doing at this point is soliciting proposals, right? Um, from anyone interested with a certain threshold to make sure that they have the financial capability to deliver. But we're not looking for any specific type of development. This is something where we need to conform the solicitations to anyone's expectations. Um, this is simply, um, uh, an, an effort to bring as many interested parties to the table with their proposals as possible.
So, what, what, what does a developer actually need to know before they're able to bid on something like this? This is a huge, huge bid, right? Is it, is there criteria here? Is there, um?
Yeah, so, I mean, remember, there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of unknowns here, as we've always said. Some developers may prefer a, a site that's a hundred percent clean. Some developers may prefer some of the buildings remain. Um, there's, without limiting the solicitations, it's advisable to simply provide information about what we have. And certainly to indicate that the city is willing to work within, with a developer to achieve remediation, uh, to achieve, uh, further demolition, depending on the needs of the developer, right? Um, but we're not trying to put words in their mouth. So we want, again, as many, as many developers at the table as possible. We're open to, uh, to situations where someone wants the entire parcel completely cleaned. We're open to situations where someone's looking for some of those buildings to exist. We're looking for situations where someone wants nothing to do with the rail spur. At the same time, we also want proposals where someone can utilize that rail spur. So we're looking for maximum diversity. No one's in a rush because we need to get this right. And the only way I believe to get it right is to get the maximum amount of viable proposals so we could start to hone in on what works best for the city through this Board of Alderman. So I, I believe in terms of what, what you asked, what does the developer need to know? They need to know what they have to work with, which is the exact, uh, extent of the parcel, uh, the buildings that remain, the extent of the remediation to date, the, the remediation that may remain, um, but we don't wanna put a lot of strings on this. We want them to come with their vision, and we want them to paint a picture for us to consider. We don't wanna box anyone in to think we're looking for something. Except I will say, we will certainly, uh, put out there that our intention is to maximize revenue and to provide jobs. So, so what I hear you saying is. Best use, those are certainly going to be the drivers of what makes a highest and best.
So what I hear you saying is this is really a solicitation of concept and idea.
Proposals.
Most, as opposed to a request for proposals.
Well, it's a request for proposals, but it's, it's certainly an open request for proposals. You know, we're looking for them to paint their best picture, um, of what they could do with that site. And again, the only parameters I think we would put on it is, um, it ha, it has to be revenue, right? It's driving revenue, it's driving jobs. That's going to be the only litmus test we're putting on this. We want the highest and best return for this property for the city, but we don't wanna put any limitations or expectations on it because, you know, we want the developers and the market to bring to us wh- what is possible. And in terms of what we're gonna promise, you know, at this point, a- again, we can only promise that the city is willing to be a partner. We're not committing anything specific at this time. Um, we want to know what they need to make their vision a reality and.
So, so the criteria would be tax, revenue, jobs, and clean, um, environment?
Well, yeah, I think that goes without saying that we don't want a hazardous development.
Well, in, in li, in light of the previous resolution.
Yep.
Right? Okay, would, would there be any other criteria that would provide guidance to developers? I, I really think this is more like a, um, a solicitation of concepts, right? Because you're, you're not gonna get involved in budget issues or, um, costs here, right?
I think that we're going to have to show them what they have to work with. So I do expect we're gonna be showing them our projections, our studies as to what it would cost, for example, to bring the rest of the buildings to the ground, what it would cost to restore some of the buildings. And we have a great amount of uh, statistics and a great amount of information regarding those potential, uh, paths. Um, or, for example, enhancements like the road, right? Taking a look at a road that would go span from the property to Route Eight. So all of those things need to be known to the developers so they understand the possibilities and potential costs. But again, we're gonna be asking them to work with this information to put together a proposal. We're not going to be trying to lead them on any particular path. Um, because we want outside-the-box thinking, but we don't want to, to move forward without saying that we explored every possibility. We've heard some great ideas. We, we want now the developers to bring those to the table and to, to, to put their best foot forward on what they could bring to us.
You know, there's, there's a lot involved here, and I'm wondering how long would it take to develop a solicitation of this type?
You know, I would be with you on taking time. Sheila, what, what would your thoughts be?
I mean, we, we have a, we've gone through a few iterations of a draft proposal. Um, so we do have a lot of the groundwork established already. Uh, also important to point out that we'd be looking for financial viability of any company or individual who makes a proposal to us, right? We have to, they have to demonstrate that they're, they're, um, viable financially. So, um, to put together a proposal, I think we could put one together within a matter of three weeks.
But I think if the question is how much time to respond, I would probably suggest longer time to respond.
Two months.
We truly want to advertise the solici, yeah, advertise the solicitation to get it out and then to give developers an ability to put up a proper proposal together. Um, yeah, two, three.
Weeks.
Um, maybe even a little, little longer, um, so they can do their due diligence.
So, so, let's say, let's say you had a proposal out in December. Uh, March one is probably a viable date for developers to submit some.
Yes.
And, and then what is the responsibility of this body relative to, uh, those submissions?
We'd have, we'd have a vetting process.
And, and I think it, it's one of those things.
Make a recommendation.
Yeah, we, we need all hands on deck for this. So I think from the very beginning, having this board be responsible for reviewing the solicitations, um, making comment. And remember, this is, it, it's something where we need to get this right. This is the future of the city. So, you know, the, the hope is that this solicitation produces, of course, the ideal proposal, but if it doesn't, you know, certainly we're committed to, you know, moving forward wi, with another.
With every.
There's no, there's no, when you, when you take everything into account, i- it's better to be absolutely confident in what we're doing here than to rush anything, you know.
With every solicitation, there's a vetting process, and with a recommendation, we come to the board for their vote or approval on the recommendation. So I don't anticipate changing that process.
So the, so the recommendation in the spring to the Board of Alderman would be to explore further with a particular developer?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great. It's, it's helpful to, to see that, uh, that, that picture and to know what to expect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I don't even know where we're at.
We gotta vote on it.
Motion by Rivers with no second.
I seconded it.
He seconded.
Second by Cassetti. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. All right, that ends, uh, I think all of our new business, right?
Motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, now the work really begins.
Second by Tar to go to executive session. We have four items. John, who do we need? Now, motion, Chicago.
Motion to come out, executive session.
Second. Wait, do we have Josh yet? Josh here?
Nope.
Nope.
You got lost.
And John's not back either. Oh, John's back.
John, are you there? Oh, Josh is here.
Oh, Josh is here.
Joe Cassetti.
Late, bro.
Oh, Joe Cassetti.
I was waiting for him. I was trying to talk to him, but he.
He's missing.
Motion to return to regular, please?
Already happened.
You have a, you have a motion in the second of the floor.
Oh, all in favor?
By, motion by Rivers, second by me.
Motion by Fa, Rivers, second by Mamone, all in favor to return to regular session?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, uh, before we go into the executive session, let's go, let's bump back to the, uh, appointment of the uh, sports, uh, advisory panel. We've confirmed that, um, Lisi is a representative of the Ansonia Softball Little League, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
But we'll stay on the list, so we're gonna, um, try to approve that list as, as stated. Um, these are three-year terms, sports advisory panel to the Parks and Recreation, expiring six thirty twenty twenty-eight. We will take up, uh, a new member. We'll ask the mayor for, uh, nominations for next month for the missing, uh, things that was pointed out early in the meeting. Uh, I'm just gonna read the names quickly so everyone knows. Frank Esposito, Jeff Bryce, Steve Kish, Keith Maynard, Kevin Rowley, Brian Picorillo, Ryan Santos, Robert, Rob Leacy Junior, and Pat Palmer. We have a motion to approve all of them to the sports advisory panel.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Motion by Mamone, second by, who was that? Janetti?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Me oppose? All right, motion carries. Thank you all for your service. And now we'll move on to executive session. We had, uh, four items. I'll take those in order. Um, under Black Leans, we had two, one A, thirty-two Crescent Street. With your pleasure.
Make a motion to authorize corporate counsel to negotiate as discussed.
Second.
Motion by Tar, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, one B, fifty-seven Lock Street. How'd you like to proceed?
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Tar, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, number two, contract negotiation for budget director.
Motion to negotiate as discussed. Proceed as discussed. Sorry, motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
Motion by Tar, second by Mamone, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, number three, reimbursement for vehicle ladder installation.
Motion to pay the claim as discussed.
Second. I second.
Motion to pay claim as discussed by Tar, second by Janetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, and unanimously, and then under four, we have four A, B, and C. Four A, work, workers' compensation matters, uh, Holman.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Tar, second by Mamone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, workers' compensation for B, uh, billing.
Motion to authorize corporate counsel to proceed as, to, the authority to settle.
Second.
Motion by Tar, second by Janetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And last one, for C, workers' compensation matters, Danley.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion, uh, by Tar, who was the second on that?
Mamone.
Mamone.
Was that? Nah, was that you?
No.
Who was the second on that?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
It's Mamone.
Oh, okay.
Mamones.
Mamone.
Looking around, I'm like, I'm no fit, nobody's lighting up here.
Stop dragging it out short. Let's go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Hit it, Rivers. Actually, oh, yeah, hit it, Rivers.
Um, no, um, is Mello still here?
Hit it, Mello. Mello, you don't.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Mello, second by Rivers. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Have a wonderful night.
Everybody, good night.
Lot of fun.
Yes.
Always.